We'll now call it order the December 5th meeting of the Richmond Public School Board. Madam Clerk, would you call the role, please?
The board members, our president, please respond next to the podium.
Here.
Ms. Gray, here. Mrs. Taylor, present. Mr. Harrison, my name is.
Present.
Dr. Jones, Mrs. Pinky Epps, Mrs. Larson, Mrs. Erica Coleman, Mr. Moore. You have a floor, Mr. Chair, and your associate, Mrs. Mary Stewart, Jasmine Jones.
Mr. Moore and board members, we are joined by Jasmine Renee Jones, Franklin Military Academy student. She is serving this year as a cadet major. She's a senior at Franklin Military Academy where she holds the position of executive officer for the battalion. She's also valedictorian in the class of 2017. She's throughout her life has lived in Richmond, Virginia. She has also lived in Gardwell, California at some point in her life with a mother and two sisters. But she moved back to Richmond because she started Richmond, left to go to California, returned to Richmond when she was nine years old. Where she applied Franklin Military Academy because she didn't want to go to any other high schools. She's glad she applied and received acceptance to FMA because there she received so many opportunities at the school. And she intends, she's a member of a Thora of extracurricular activities and programs such as National Ops Society, Young Adult Police Commissioners, Thomas Jefferson High School marching band, quick drum line, upward bound. She's currently employed as a customer service associate at Walgreens. So tell us which location and we'll make sure we're aware of your position. This is the beginning of her life, she says, and she's looking forward to continue her journey to accomplish her career goals of becoming a Navy psychologist.
Thank you so much for joining us. It's a wonderful, wonderful to have you here. Thank you. Before we go on with the agenda, we do have a request from Mrs. Pinky Epps. She would like to participate in our closed session only telephonically. She apparently is in DC for training on the implementation of the ESSA for the next couple of days. So we have allowed members to participate in a portion of our pleadings telephonically, but I believe it's been our practice not to allow that for the closed sessions. So I entertain a motion for any discussion about Miss Epps' request at this time. Do you have any close?
Just our request, right.
Ms. Gray, Ms. Larson.
It has not been our practice to allow participation electronically in closed sessions because of the nature of the discussions that take place in closed and the inability to assure that there's confidentiality in the discussion. So I would say I'm not in support of that. I'm also wondering why if we're, if we are paying for a trip to DC for training for someone who's only got one. This is our last official meeting. So we're not paying for that trip. That's good to know, thank you.
So, thank you, Ms. Gray, Attorney Lady. You all are correct, we have not allowed that to happen. So that I am in support of what the board, the board decides. Excuse me, I am in support of what the board decides because that is the executive session. I know that two emails came out. One was to participate in the meeting and this is just a closed session, so.
Right, came in at 6:02. Any other discussions, Ms. Taylor?
If someone could sign to use my request for help with the name and deny for someone to teleconference in for a closed session because I don't recall that conversation ever taking place, someone being denied participation in a closed session. As an authority.
Every, every time we've had a board member, in my recollection, participate in a general meeting telephonically, we've always ended that participation once we go into close. I don't remember when anybody's.
Because I remember when I first encountered there was no clothes at the last meeting that I talked about.
There was no clothes?
Correct. I've never been denied a chance to participate in that award.
There was no clothes session?
I know the last one, but I never did see that I participated in.
Okay, your, your, your recollection may be correct. I'm saying what I recall and I'm here to present the request and so I'll get a consensus for if there's a motion to allow it. Just pay even if we're sitting in the hall. No, Ms. Gray. Ms. Gray, would you let Miss Epps know? Thank you. We have any limits to the agenda? Okay, next slide. For our policies, we have to make them specific.
If the board refers to having participation in a local location disapproved such disapproval will be recorded in minutes of specificity. Certainly you all get a consensus of that, that the numbers on the cells are.
I move that we deny the request to allow participation in closed meeting session.
Was there something for?
For Miss, um, that's because we are not able to assure that there is confidentiality in the discussion.
So. It's been moved and properly settled, any discussion or motion? Ms. Taylor?
I just wanted to be on the record that you guys feel like anything that we discuss behind both doors, there's something you should have information about either way, and so I think that it shouldn't be a problem.
Any further discussion? Senator Madam Clerk, would you call the role, please?
Yes.
Ms. Gray?
Yes.
Ms. Larson? Yes. Ms. Harrison?
Yes.
Ms. Taylor?
No.
Yes.
Mr. Moore and school board, we know his president here in the board meeting. I'd like to take this opportunity to celebrate one of our teachers and his recognition for our peers in Commonwealth of Virginia and also to celebrate your work in Richmond Public Schools. This time, on behalf of the school board of the city of Richmond, we're presenting you the certificate of recognition. This award is presented to Kirsty. Ms. Alex at Benford Middle School. She has been recognized as a middle school art teacher of the year for the Commonwealth of Virginia. Uh, pleasures to be in assistance with our policy despite not signing up. We always offer the opportunity for folks who wish to offer public Commonwealth school board meetings, do so. We only have a few simple rules which are, please refrain from using Bulgarian or profanely. Please don't sell anything. Please be respectful of everyone in attendance and address your comments to the board. If you're representing yourself or if you're just an individual, you will be allowed three minutes. If you're representing a group, you will be allowed five minutes. If there are those who would like to, all the public commons, I ask that you please line up in the front aisle, in the center aisle here. Sign your name when we get to the podium and be sure to state your name before you begin your comments so that we can have that for the record and minutes. And no, no pause, please.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Cindy Watts. I'm the PTA president at Patrick Henry School of Science and Arts. And I'm also a mother of a child who attends Patrick Henry and another child who graduated from Patrick Henry and is now at Albert Hill. I've been a resident of the city of Richmond for seventeen years and I'm a professor at the University of Richmond. I'm here to do three things tonight. First is to thank you. I know this is your last meeting and I want to thank you for your service through the city of Richmond and to the public schools. Second, I want to share some good news. And the good news is really concerning our accreditation. Patrick Henry recently discovered, and I speak on behalf of the PTA, but also a number of individuals who contacted me and made me aware that the school has now reached accreditation through a change in legislation and that was passed last spring. And what changed, I'm not sure if you're all aware, was the coding for expedited retakes. Now that change affected us. We missed the mathematics exam by a tenth of a percent. And that margin was over taken with this change in legislation and the recalculation of the math score. So now we've passed all our SOLs and it's great news. We're really excited, we're really pleased. The teachers have worked very hard. The administration has, has done a great deal of work to, to get our school to that level. And we continue to do that. The PTA has been very supportive. There's a lot of parent involvement in, in our school. We require it, but many go above and beyond requirements. And so I just wanted to share the good news. Really, we're pleased and we're here to, to share that excitement. And really, the last thing I just want to ask of you is a request, a simple request. And that is, as you are in your last meeting, as you are maybe about to partake in different offices and continue on it in different regards, I, I ask that you take into serious consideration how this change in legislation does affect our standing and that through this, this new coding for expedited retakes and through the, the status that we've now achieved that you consider giving Patrick Henry School of Science and Arts full accreditation, which is what we've earned. And then we ask for your support. We ask to work with you. We are not here to do anything but really seek to maintain strong ties with the Richmond City School Board and to work with you to see that Patrick Henry's accreditation reflects the reality that it is and according to the law. Thank you very much.
My name is Tom Hartman, I'm speaking as an individual. I stand here to continue my plea for some sort of school board continuity. Only one of you in the school board will be back. And although we like to say a new broom sweeps clean, the metaphor does not apply well. When what is at issue is other than a dirty floor. RPS is not a dirty floor. Out with the old, in with the new does not apply well in the middle of a building project. School board continuity. My idea is a voluntary emeritus group to take on special projects designated by the sitting school board. Regardless of how some decent continuity is to be created, I request all sitting school board members other than Mr. Moore to pressure Mr. Moore to guide the newbies in designing such continuity. My main idea for a special project is for the emeritus group to mine the moribund strategic plan for usable initiatives. So much community effort, so expensive a consulting firm. In retrospect, the strategic plan was not dead upon arrival, but it was already in the intensive care unit. When the participation plaques were handed out, I was the only person present from my forty-person working group. Not even the group leader was present. In my view, excellent ideas, faulty structure. Whether it was the consulting firm that messed up or whether something got fouled up in accommodating to RPS, I do not know. Basically, each step in the process produced an increasingly narrow bottleneck until each major set of items landed on one downtown desk as that person's sole responsibility. Not their only responsibility, but they alone had the responsibility for that entire set of items. Individual persons, none of whom were waiting around for something additional to do, I am sure. If there is any interest in not letting the strategic planning effort go to waste, the person to consult would be Victoria Oakley.
Good afternoon, my name is Charlotte Hare. I am president of the Richmond Education Association. Tonight I come to remind us of a few things and to share some accolades. As citizen leaders, the school board members face complex and demanding challenges. These are things that many people don't fully understand the scope of and they are far reaching, far beyond the responsibilities of everyday life. The job has been established that you are to establish the vision for the education program where you are. You are to design a structure to achieve that vision. You are to ensure schools are accountable to the community and strongly advocate for the improvement, continuous improvement in student learning. That job entails an endless string of meetings and school functions to attend, readings of reports, agendas, proposals, and other information to read and study, and a host of difficult decisions to make. School board members come from all walks of life. They have all kinds of different day jobs. Although they wear many hats during the day, when it's time to be a part of the collective part and wear the collective hat of a school board, it's time to get down to the business of leading your school division. You have to pull together as a team toward a common goal of helping all students achieve. Through individual school boards, though individual school board members may sometimes disagree on issues, their role as a member of the school board is to consistently strive toward the goal of high academic achievement. Working together, school board members speak out for the public schools and the school and the students they serve. You contribute hundreds and hundreds of hours each year leading our division. Whether it is crafting policy, hiring hot, top-notch administrators, listening to staff and students' concerns, or recognizing outstanding programs. You as board members always keep your eyes on the goals student achieve. The time that you spend in board meetings represents just a small fraction of what it is that you are elected to and many hours you have spent at home and out in the streets working for the good of our students and the division. You have also spent many hours working hard in seminars and trainings to keep abreast of the latest trends in educational leadership and you're deeply involved in the community activities and you spend many hours in the schools at extracurricular events. You love learning, you have concern and a care for the students, the staff and the community, and that drives you as a board member to do what's best for all concerned. This is the last meeting for this board and as a representative of the Richmond Education Association, we would like to thank you for your service. We hope that your time has been spent doing all those wonderful things that I just talked about for our students. And we hope that your work will not stop if you're not in this elected position. Well, there is still much work to do, many battles that we must fight and it's going to take all of us as a village to get those goals accomplished so that we can continue to have high student achievement and great places for our staff and students to live, learn, and work. Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Thank you to those who, thank you to those who were just paid our public information. Madam Clerk, is that a matter of?
Next slide is item four, I'm giving the full name, four plus zero one, to see the presentation from the boys and girls club.
Good evening, Mr. Moore, another board member. Boys and girls, the Boys and Girls Club approached us probably about six months ago regarding a piece of land that is adjacent to MLK. The particular piece of land is this, here's MLK right here. Here's the roadway leading where our buses and cars go and it's this piece of land that's located here. That particular tract of land in the initial plan for MLK was intended to be a health center and then because of budget constraints, that was eliminated. And this evening, Ty McFarland, who's president and CEO of Boys and Girls Club, would like to give a presentation on what they'd like to do with that particular piece of land. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Krantz. Good evening. Great to appreciate everybody's time this evening to talk a little bit about our coaching dreams for young people, Boys and Girls Club. Because Mr. Krantz mentioned you have an interest in entering into a long-term lease for the property that he identified. We own the midst of about three quarters of the way through a twenty-five million dollar fundraising campaign and part of that is to build a twenty-two thousand square foot facility on the property that Mr. Krantz identified to be a new Boys and Girls Clubs. Our role with that particular facility will be a housing peak to twelve graders and the two primary focus is making sure that we have the intentional staff, the intentional program, the intentional partners to ensure that all the kids who graduate to Boys Club become college ready. Let me be very clear, that doesn't necessarily mean college bound. The other part of that will be is making sure that our kids are getting work experience, internships, externships as the end of their labors, high school, giving that experience of working. College ready to us means our kids are going to have the basic academic competencies, proficiencies, the social, emotional skills to, as they leave high school, ready to either go to college or enter the workforce and gain liberal wage employment. Thus helping many of our kids ideally break the generation cycle, generation of poverty cycle. We are seeing that this facility will obviously be a community facility too. Our kids will not get there until two thirty in the morning, the school lets out. We'll operate well into the evening out tonight about at night. We see it as an ideal opportunity to partner with you under our B A Future Centers to make sure that your staff, that those resources are there. We see it as an ideal opportunity for the community to use the board going for daytime as different programs, G D programs, whatever they might be. And most importantly, we see the facility being unlike any other Boys and Girls Clubs in the city. We want our kids to have a state-of-the-art facility, a short-term reserve that. They deserve to step into space that as they leave Richmond, they leave their neighborhood, they will not be defeated at the door as they go to college or they enter liberal wage employment workplaces. So our role is to make sure that we have needed kids that we can accompany at one time in this building during the course of the first couple of years, five to six hundred kids in their paint line, eight to twelve grade, being case managed towards being college ready. So we greatly appreciate your consideration of it and greatly appreciate the partnership that we've had so far. Thank you.
So there's no decision for us to make tonight, but I did think it was important for us to hear about the concept and I'll open it up for a few questions. Did I see your answer, Ms. Gray?
That was my question.
Ms. Sarah's mom?
Thank you so much for this presentation. I know you and I have talked over the past several months and as I shared a few months ago, you have my full support. Even though I'm not continuing the next four years on the next board, I will still support you from afar to make sure that this dream is a reality for our kids in the East End. Anything that I can do to support that, please let me know. I think this is a wonderful opportunity for the Boys and Girls Club to expand their program. They always have a waiting list from my understanding of kids and this provides the opportunity for not just kids at Martin Luther Kennedy Middle School, but also their feeder high school and the elementary schools that feed into MLK to possibly be a part of the program. So this is exciting. Thank you so much for presenting this to us and I'm going to continue to pray that this becomes a reality for our children in the East End. So thank you so very much.
Thank you. Ms. Coleman, Ms. Gray?
Also thank you, Mr. Moore. And we've talked a lot about this since it's been going around. And when you think about the East End and the Detroit East End, it is really exciting to have an opportunity like this. Specifically, I'm glad to be connected to the B A Future Centers and again for young people in outer school time to get the same kind of services that we're offering in the centers can only enhance what's going on. So thank you so much. I always like to tease my colleague, even though it's, will be located in the sixth district, the majority of young people will be from the seventh.
Ms. Coleman, I just want to share with you there that we discussed this outside.
I just wanted to affirm my support as well. Now we met with Kristen many months back and I think we were both very supportive of your efforts and I think it's a great partnership with the school districts and not having to try to find and purchase that amount of land. But if you're serving the same population as we are, it's a great opportunity for children in the city to grow.
Any other comments, questions? Ms. Taylor?
I too appreciate, um, bringing this to the East End community, and just to confirm this one point, any comments to the district, because if you all think that we're playing this, that's very much appreciated.
That's right. We just would love to have the land. We will proudly raise all the dollars. Not only will it be, right now, the initial price tag is around five million dollars to build the facility, but we will also donate operating dollars to resupply. So there will be no cost other than the land to this purposeful initiative.
Thank you.
Thank you, Thomas.
Thank you.
The next slide is, I am five, I am superintendent, two thousand and seventeen, estimated, and see action budget.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of board. Tonight marks the beginning of our annual process with the public with regard to our budget process. Um, I will say that it's a sad night for me that I won't get to work through this process with all of you. Uh, I'm certain we'll continue to stay in touch. Um, there are so many things that are in this budget that need to be done to support our children. I certainly will look to those of you that are going to continue on in a capacity, and those of you that will continue on in a different capacity, uh, to help support our students. Uh, for many of you, if they've been here for four or longer, four years or longer, this will seem, um, very similar to how you've done this in the past, uh, but for the community. I, I thought it was important tonight to have a thorough, of what I thought was easy-to-understand presentation. With that, we'll talk about why we're starting now. It is a little earlier. It's, uh, the first part of December. And we'll see the Code of Virginia talks about the school board superintendent governing body's responsibilities with regard to approving a budget, but very specifically, the superintendent's responsibility is to bring forward an estimate of the amount of money needed to operate the school divisions next year. Um, the school board's wishes were to start early this year, certainly as we look to the transition, uh, with new school board members, new city councils, new mayor. Uh, it was going to be very important to bring forward, uh, this estimate of needs early, uh, so we could get this into the public's eye and we could start our public discussion. So, the Code of Virginia is very clear that, um, we begin with an estimate of needs. Uh, as you know, some school divisions in the area start with a bu, a budget after the governor's budget, uh, has already been received, uh, and the general assembly has done their work. Um, that is not, uh, that is not our plan, and certainly not our plan for this year, knowing that we are, uh, in a transition year. All of you have looked at the Bellwether report. The timing of this report was, was particularly good as we go into our budget cycle. I'm not going to go through all of the details of the slides that are in this presentation, but I would like to talk about some highlights. Uh, the report is very similar to what our budget process does and talks about where our money comes from, what we do with it, and a justification for why we spend more money than some others do. Um, but something that's really important is on the bottom of this slide, a definition of success, and also de, definition of success of the budget process, is the community and RBS have a shared understanding of the RBS budget and a platform for engaging stakeholders in future decisions. We have already begun that process. We've reached out to the schools. We've received requests from many of our schools. Um, we have a process where we're sending a survey out. We also have worked with our partner Lex Paul to make sure that we have lots of opportunity for community engagement as we work through the next several months, uh, to, uh, reach, uh, some agreement with city council ultimately about funding for our budget. Where Bellwether started was taking a look at where we spend our money, uh, by large category, and you'll see that the tall bar on the left side says seventy-three percent, and it talks about instruction in the school model. Seventy-three percent makes us one of the highest instruction-spending school divisions in the Commonwealth. The other number that I'd like to talk about here is the third, the shortest column, and it shows two percent. Our administrative cost is right today, uh, this, this date is a couple of years old, is today is a two-point-eight percent, and that puts us one of the very lowest in the Commonwealth and one of the lowest in the region. Uh, most folks are in the neighborhood of about four percent. So our administrative overhead is very low, uh, comparatively to, to our neighbors and our peer groups. We're also, uh, attempted to compare, uh, some of our higher needs populations to talk about our students that are economically disadvantaged, students with disabilities, and people with proficiency students. You'll see the state's comparison. We are roughly two times, uh, higher with regard to economically disadvantaged students, one and a half times higher than the state average, uh, for students with disabilities, and roughly, uh, equal with students of limited English proficiency. Maybe more relevant, um, they took a look at, uh, peer school divisions, Norfolk, Newport News, and Portsmouth, and if you look at the same graphics across the bottom, you'll see economically disadvantaged, even with our peer groups, uh, we have a higher economically disadvantaged population, a higher number of students, proportional number of students with disabilities, and a higher limited English proficiency. Why all of this is important, again, in a budget presentation? We're talking about the dollars that we spend, why we spend them, and where we spend them. So this was designed by Bellwether and something that we've worked on as a school division for years and years and years to document the high needs of our school division. One of the ways that that, that shows up in our, in our schools, uh, is in our low pupil teacher ratio. You'll see here compared to our peer groups, uh, at the secondary level, uh, we're very comparable at twelve-point-two-one, uh, and at the elementary level, very low at nine-point-three-one. This is not what a typical classroom looks like. When you walk into a school and you see a class of second graders, you'll generally see nine second graders in the class, and the reason that we use these numbers to compare is, is how we can compare ourselves to other school divisions. This information comes from the annual school report that every school division is required to submit every year. Uh, so this includes special ed teachers, resource teachers, uh, this includes all of, all of the teachers in all of our schools. But what it does is it talks about our low class size, uh, and the fact that that, uh, is more expensive and, and better support, uh, for our children and for our teachers. Without going into all the details about why lower pupil teacher ratio is better, uh, other than the, uh, the, the certainly common sense that, uh, there are fewer students in a classroom, uh, it certainly, the discussion, uh, has been held over many years about the potential for, for lower discipline issues, um, and the attractiveness for teachers to work in a school division that has lower pupil teacher ratio. Um, and certainly, one of the things that's very important to all of our teachers, the ability to have more individual time on task with students. Uh, you'll see a, a note across the, the bottom that talks about, um, the engaged, high-quality teacher is the most important component in our schools and our classrooms, and that's absolutely the truth. However, lower pupil teacher ratios certainly help support learning in our schools. What does that mean? That means that compared to our peers, we spend about twenty-two hundred dollars more on instruction, and that's what that first graphic represents, twenty-two hundred dollars more on instruction. We spend about the same on the other support areas of the school division. You'll see the bar that's upside down, a hundred and fifty dollars. That's a negative hundred and fifty dollars. That shows that we are, we are lower than our peers with administrative support. Although we spend twenty-two hundred more dollars, um, we certainly want to talk as the evening goes on about the, the community support dollars and lack thereof that, that we're able to bring in from our schools, uh, and the need for, for those services to be offered through public funding. Speaking of public funding, I think we all know that our money comes from three primary areas. Uh, it comes from the state, including sales tax, the local government, the city, and the federal government. Uh, our federal dollars, as you all know, are very targeted for specific needs. Uh, our, the number of students we have drives, uh, the amount of funding we have, and the types and, uh, the demographic makeup of our students also drives the funding, and then the local programs that we choose to offer. Why is that important? As we look to the city, and we certainly have since, uh, uh, since my memory and, um, most recently with Dr. Ben, we have gone to the city with needs that have been in excess of funding. Um, we will go to the city with, with a list of needs this year, uh, that we will ask for them to fund. Uh, the city funds proportionally more of our expenditures than our peer groups and our neighbors. This is the reason why. The state determines the proportionate slice of the state pie that we receive based on the composite index. That is an ability that the state uses for a, for a locality to pay for its own services as opposed to reaching out to the state or federal level, looking for state tax dollars or federal tax dollars. Um, what this says is that the, the variables in the calculation for the city are high comparatively. You'll see high property values, high income. Um, primarily, the, the big difference for us is because we have so many large buildings, corporate headquarters that are housed here. Uh, as we all know, though, unfortunately, this does not represent the typical family that has children in our schools. So what this shows is the city, uh, does pay a greater percentage, and we're going to see what those percentages are, uh, than our peer groups, Norfolk, Newport News, and Portsmouth, because the calculation that the state uses says that the city is richer, uh, based on the local taxes that they are able to levy and collect. Um, what that doesn't mean, though, is that that addresses the needs of our schools. It simply says that the way that the state slices the pie, that the city is responsible for a greater level of school funding. This is a pie chart from the city, and, uh, one that, that is really important as we begin our discussion with new school board, new city council, new mayor-elect. A commitment has been made over the years, and specifically, uh, that with the, uh, with the last several months with our new mayor-elect and the meetings that we've had with him, um, that public safety and public education are the two pillars of our community, that we must invest in those. Uh, we must continue to focus on public education, or our public safety dollars will continue to grow, uh, and our community will continue to struggle. We bring this to show that, that while, um, we are very supportive, obviously, of public safety, we, we want the city to continue to remember to, to live up to that commitment, to honor that commitment, that education has got to be the foundation to make our community successful. And then a summary from Bellwether that talks about our higher needs populations, uh, economic, uh, disadvantaged students, students with disabilities, limited English proficiency, that we spend more on instruction than our, than our, uh, peer groups and our neighbors, and also that, that as we look into capitals with Mr. Krantz just a little later on, uh, that we do have small schools, that small schools cost more, and we talked about, talked about why. Uh, we'll hold that for a little bit later in the presentation. Gets into the details, and again, um, the intent for tonight is, because this is the first, uh, introduction to the public, is to talk, uh, in what we hope are reasonably under, uh, easy-to-understand terms. So we're going to start with fiscal eighteen. These are the new fiscal eighteen requirements in the middle. The first bolded heading that says requirements, we have the Virginia retirement system. You'll see that, uh, that those are the new rates, the new group life rate, the new retirement healthcare rate. All of those were approved by the general assembly in two thousand and twelve. Those rates are not negotiable. They are written in, in the Code of Virginia. They are in law. School board and city council voted, uh, for our new health plan that has a three-point-seven percent increase. All of those, you will see total of four-point-four million dollars. We're calling those requirements because those, again, are legislative requirements, and, um, the approval of health, the plan voted on by the school board and city council. The second one, we're calling commitments. The school board voted for the current year budget to implement the teacher decompression salary scale. We've only received funding to implement year one, which was fifty percent of that plan. This is the second year of that commitment. So that is coming forward for consideration, uh, and we are calling that a commitment. Um, you'll see that the total of that is four-point-nine million. The details of the increase you'll see on the bottom are very similar to the current year. The average teacher salary increase will be four-point-one percent. Um, some teachers will receive significantly more, some less. Um, and the average, again, for eighteen will be four-point-one percent. I'll pause here and talk, even though we, we're going to talk about the academic improvement plan in just a, a couple of minutes. But while we're talking about teacher salaries, uh, since the current administration, current superintendent administration have been here with sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen budgets, if we look at the additional professional development days that have been approved to ones that are in the academic improvement plan, and the implementation of the raises and the teacher decompression, over this three-year period, if we received funding to implement the academic improvement plan and the teacher decompression, we would have our teachers onboard with us nine additional days per year for planning for our students, a five percent increase in the number of days that they would work with us, and they would receive a fifteen percent increase, making us the most attractive school division in the, in the metro region. So, uh, Dr. Ben and the team have brought forward, uh, excellent planning, uh, for teacher attraction and retention. We've got to do our job of communication and education with our folks at city council to help them understand how important it is to, to get this passed and funded. Additional new requests for eighteen, we took a look at all of our folks that are on the non-teaching scale, and we looked at the, at the Department of Labor for, uh, state and local government over the last two years, and then we looked at, uh, the cost of inflation. We've had a one-point-five percent increase and a one-point-one-seven percent increase. Uh, the cost of inflation over the last two years and the average cost of increases for state and local government employees over those last two years, uh, has been just over five percent. We would, would like, uh, to include a two-and-a-half percent cost of living adjustment so we can have our non-teaching staff, um, remain, uh, equal with the rate of inflation. As we move into the staffing, uh, new requests from eighteen, you'll see a common theme, I think, uh, world language instructional specialist testing administrator, multicultural counselor, office associate, data processing operator, and perpetrator. If you continue on to see foreign languages, we are continually seeing tremendous increases in our students that English is their second language or English language learners. Uh, we know that this is a growing population. You as a board have dealt with this for multiple years. It is continuing to grow. Uh, we know that this is an area that we've got to have more support. Um, we have students, I, I think that Dr. Ben shared with me, we had, uh, twelve immigrants that came in, uh, just last week. Uh, so we're, we're continuing to see huge numbers of, uh, influx of English language learners. We think it's time to have a nurse in every building. We need twelve additional nurses, and we would like, we would like to include that, uh, in the request for this year. The instructional folks have taken a good, hard look at how can we continue to focus on arts and language, and, um, we are requesting five additional positions, uh, to enhance our middle school Spanish and American Sign Language Program, and also looking at our IB program, uh, gifted program to, um, to support Mandarin at the elementary level at Schimborazo and the secondary level at Brown and Thomas Jefferson. And trying to build feeder patterns for our abandoned course. We're trying to enhance our middle school abandoned course programs, uh, so as our, and we're going to talk about athletics in just a moment, as our students move from middle school into high school, uh, to try to, try to give them a, uh, a step in the right direction so that they will be on par with their neighbors, uh, and, and in many cases, ahead of, of our neighbors as we move forward from middle to high school. We've had very good success as you look at professional development for, uh, teachers and mentors. Um, we've had very good success with, uh, having a stipend for our teachers in our schools as we bring new teachers that are out of school, uh, trying to learn classroom management, um, and, and develop their skills. We would like to expand that program, uh, to try to make the transition easier for our new teachers. We continue to struggle to have, um, many of our folks, uh, Dr. Ben has talked extensively about this, show up every day. Uh, we know that, that that's a, a struggle with, with many school divisions. Uh, we want a trial. We want a, um, a beginning step, if you will, to take a look at, uh, denied schools and transportation employees to receive a five-hundred-dollar bonus. Uh, we're estimating two hundred employees would take advantage of that. Uh, we don't know where that would take us, but what we want to see is a big improvement, uh, in the attendance of our employees every day. Middle school athletics, uh, like, uh, like many of you, uh, went to the number of our ballgames over the fall, and, um, many of our, our schools struggle, uh, as we play our surrounding neighbors. Um, Dr. Ben and the administrative folks feel very strongly that we can build feeder programs for middle school football, for girls volleyball, cheerleading, uh, in both fall and spring, uh, that our students will begin to learn the basics so as they move into high school and they start to compete regionally, um, that they, that will be more successful. Uh, we're including, uh, these costs to, uh, enhance our middle school athletic program. You'll see on the very bottom, there's an asterisk that says there's not included equipment startup. We would look to one-time dollars either from the private sector or one-time savings at the end at the end of the year from the budget to use those to begin outfitting our middle school athletic programs. And again, staying with the same theme, when we look at face foreign language support, this is actually an existing cost. We are already paying more for interpreter support on our outside contract, a lot like we're going to see with some of the seventeen carryover requests, a level of service that we're already paying for, though we're having to cover through turnover and transition. So a number that I hope you'll pay attention to is at 3. roughly $8,374,000. Because this is important. Our requirements, our benefit requirements are 4.4 million. Our commitment to year two of the teacher decompression plan is 4.9 million. These are requirements and commitments that we've already made. The new requests that are coming forward are only 3.8 million. Substantially, all of that is to support our English language learners, to support our challenged population, and the 2.5% increase for our non-teachers. So total new eighteen requests of just over $13 million. However, a tremendous amount of work has been done by the superintendent, previous administration, and this board to bring forward needs. Just because we didn't receive funding for our needs in the seventeen budget and the sixteen budget doesn't mean that those needs have gone away. So we also want to come back with some fiscal seventeen requests. You'll see the request for the IB coordinator at Brown. You'll remember the extensive discussion. This was something that was approved in the budget. It just wasn't funded for the current year. We are one of only, I think, Dr. Bedden shared with me, 68 school divisions in the country that on Wednesday will receive a visit from the president's office to look at the president's council on arts and humanities. We're including this for our local match. We feel that we're going to have a product, that the president's office will come to Richmond and support this program. We also know that we don't have the technology support, like many school divisions in our buildings, to keep our technology functioning, specifically the instructional technology that our students and teachers are using. We need to have more folks in our schools to support our technology. Other than that, on this page, you'll remember this phrase from last year. You see the next group part-time stipends, contract adjustments. You'll see in parentheses, structural deficiencies. These are things that we're already paying for. These are services that are in the budget. We are paying for these with savings from turnover from vacant positions. The same thing with the other group. We're paying for these existing services. We're just having to use turnover dollars at the end of the year. So they're still there. We need this level of service, but we need to adjust our budget with additional funding to pay for them. There is one exception that we put in under the seventeen request, and that's athletic equipment maintenance. But you'll remember that that was a request that you approved in the current year budget, was to try to, again, bring the level of our funding and the level of our equipment for our high school athletics up to par with the region. So we're bringing forward $4.4 million of school board-approved budget needs back into eighteen. And certainly, this is the last set of requests, but certainly not the least. This is the academic improvement plan. You'll see that we talked about trying to adjust teacher contracts by the nine days, while there's a 5% increase in their commitment to our students and to our school division. That also would come with the teacher decompression plan, with over three years of 15% teacher salary increase. And these are the positions associated with implementing the academic improvement plan. Part of the academic improvement plan has been implemented, as you know. This is the middle school component that has not, and the assessment analysts that have not. These are coming back. These are an extremely high priority and one that I'm certain Dr. Bedden or Dr. Kane will talk with you as you choose about how high of a priority. But the summary for all of us, the public in particular, though, I hope folks will focus on a few numbers on this page. The requirements against the benefits that are legislatively already in stone. The contract has been approved for the healthcare. The commitment that's been made for the teacher compression. The total of those, $9.3 million, new requests to support English language learners, the cost of living adjustment for our non-teachers, only $3.8 billion. A total of $13.1 million. We are bringing back the seventeen requests that were approved by the school board and the sixteen academic improvement plan that was approved by the school board. The 22 million, as folks will look, 22.8 million seems to be a big number. If you look at the number in the oval at the bottom, you'll see the budget was reduced from 2009 to 2014 by 22 million dollars. Over the last couple of years, we continue to come forward with similar numbers. The superintendent and the administrative team and the school board has done an excellent job of identifying the needs of the school division. They simply haven't been funded over this three-year period. So we come back to work with the new mayor, the new city council, new school board to work through the details of all of the programs that these dollars will support. And I will pause before we go into really some of the accounting detail and see if there's any comments by the superintendent, the administration, or the school board head of the question.
Thank you so much for the presentation. Can you remind me, what is the cost to hire one additional teacher to include benefits?
I can't, I did so, right, it said we found $100,000.
Okay. I was wondering, in comparison to some of the positions on the wish list. So when you look at a position for example, for the multi-coastal operator, what would that put them with the starting salary at?
When you're saying the $90,000?
Yeah, exactly.
Those are 11-month people.
So that includes their benefits, too?
It does, yes, ma'am.
So if you take away the benefits, what would that equate to?
Benefits in our calculation right now are about 40%, so the $90,000 take away $36,000.
Okay, fantastic.
$54,000.
Okay. Okay, and additionally, when I read the recommendations for the salary decompression that thankfully went through at least a 50% this last fiscal year, I would also ask for what the cost would be for the rest of our staff, and with the amount that you gave of 1.2% or the 2.5%. Of course, that's not a decompression of the salaries. But first, you have figures for what the salary decompression will be for all of our digital staff. And secondly, as it relates to the 2.5%, what does that actually equate to as far as how they compare with the surrounding areas?
Yes, ma'am. You may remember, either the, one of the most recent two meetings, there were a list of more than 100 positions that were adjusted as a result of the administrative salary study. We have implemented it, and you included in your budget the correction for the current year to move folks to the correct rates compared, comparative to our regional evaluation we've done by our outside consultant. So you've already approved that part. So that decompression, if you will, has been done on the non-teaching side. What we're looking to do is to catch up to that cost of living for the rate of inflation over the last two years that all of the employees here have not received. We do lag behind our three competitors in this region, three major competitors in this region, in the amount of non-teacher raises that our folks have received over the last two years.
I just, as a follow-up, my understanding was that the adjustments that were made to salaries were done to specific or for specific departments, I.D., the IT department, the HR department, and the like. So you're saying that positions like custodians, bus drivers, they have a decompression?
The, I also believe that there were a number of instructional support positions.
I think, first of all, it wasn't used the term decompression, it was the only decompression that was applied is to instructional salary schedule. So I'll make sure you use correct language. There was also the max that they included in review of salaries for who called it high salary schedule. And there were a number of positions that were declared to be under the mid-range for beginning salary range of that type. You approved those, and we corrected those. So they've already been done, referring to. Last year, you gave 1.7%.
Yes, for 1.7%.
1.7%. Every non-instructional, non-teacher-scale person got that raise.
Right.
They treated everybody the same.
Okay, I understand that, but what I'm saying is that was the teachers received that put them on a salary schedule for a shorter amount of time. That did not apply to positions like bus drivers.
Bus drivers got the same.
Well, 1.7% is obscure to me. I'm talking about something that is impactful and, you know, brings them up to a paid schedule. Because I know we have bus drivers for, for example, $17,000 a year, which is not livable wages. So I'm just wondering, what have we done as a school district to make those positions competitive? Because I know in conversations that I've had with Mr. Krantz, you know, we can't keep a lot of bus drivers. We can't hire bus drivers a lot because of those salaries. So what have we done for those employees?
The salary schedule was.
The top of 1.7%.
The salary schedule was what they renewed, included those people also. It included, the market review was done to include all of the positions.
And that was the 1.7%?
No, the 1.7% was a raise that's given after the assessment of the positions. Everybody across the region has challenges with bus drivers. It's not.
Oh, I understand that. I was just wondering, what does that dollar amount look like? Because my last discussion was that that was something we were working on. Not that it's something we've already done, and I haven't seen anything that shows any type of substantial increase as compared to over bus drivers.
This one would be, the 2.5% would be a substantial increase.
I would like to see the term work towards.
You remember, too, that you developed salary schedules based on the market. And so you click in the market, and the point is that we were competitive. The issue becomes, we're still trying to, with this percent increase, still ahead because of the challenges of your financial services. You put it as a percent of your salary. New board can choose to change those salary schedules and say, we want it to be definitely, regardless of raises, X number of dollars above the market. That could be a decision that can be made, but the study was looking at what is the market value that you had. And then we also, that was also added, 1.7% money increase on that. So if we were in market value, that's what we'd run forward, and that's the salary schedule.
Thank you.
Ms. Larson and Sarah Brown.
Thank you. This was very thorough. So one thought I had, because we are not going to, well, I'm not going to be here to ultimately approve the budget, is I have really appreciated that we have had that line item in the budget for athletic equipment. And all of that came about because of the sports backers report they got, I believe, that first year we were on board. And then Dr. Bedden came in. So I think that as a background with the new board coming in, it might be good to give them some of the history on that. So even though we're not exactly where we want to be, we have a plan moving forward. And at that time, we didn't have a plan, and I wouldn't like to see that removed from the budget. I'd like it to remain there because we, you know, we have the order of the schools, and so there are some schools that have received their funding and others that haven't received their big bump. So that's one thing. And then the stipends, the $500 stipends that you all are looking at for not being active. So what if it's for the year, or have you not figured that out?
At this moment, that would be for the whole year. Probably paid twice during the year.
Okay.
We have done some analytical work. Our temporary floor staffs have taken a look. If we could get 200, it would be quite an improvement over where we're at today.
Okay, okay. I like that stuff. I think that having incentives is a good idea. I mean, in a budget, it's our budget. It's not a huge amount of money. So I also think that would be a great thing to keep in. I mean, everything looks really solid, and I'm glad you all included what was left out last year. I'm sure there will be a lot of changes between now and the recent budget in February, but it's definitely a strike.
Ms. Harris, Mohammed, Ms. Gray.
I too want to embrace the same sentiments as Ms. Larson. This is a very thorough report. I have enjoyed your financial reporting because it is self-explanatory, a fifth grader, if you will, that understands the line items. I do have a question, though, for the superintendent. That testing administrator position, is that a position? And well, it's a one FTE, so where would that position be held? Is it central office or Dr. Kane's? Is that the position that is currently held by the young lady who presented to us a few months ago? Separate position? So all of those questions into one?
Right, so it is a separate position. So that position is a manager of the testing office, and this position will help us to manage. She's basically a one-person office.
So it's going to allow her to relieve some of those managers and testing duties to have some help? What about testing administrators at our secondary schools? Do we, that's, okay.
And those are assessment analysts.
Assessment analysts, thank you. Brought them back again, okay.
That's it.
So I have them, okay. Thank you so much. Again, Mr. Myers, thank you for your reporting.
Ms. Gray.
Testo-division. Are you done? I just wanted to ask about the state side of it. I know that we were depending upon the state to make sure we made the teacher decompression a reality. Is that still supposed to be protected in this next biennial budget?
Not at this moment. If, or there's additional questions through this point before then, we'll start to walk through a little bit of the rankings and the Asian part, and we'll talk about the state revenue.
Okay, that's fine. Yeah, there are no questions. That was my only concern.
Okay. Again, more of an accounting overview. You'll see that our total budget, total request now is 303,180,680. The 22,796,208 dollar increase are 8.1%. 3.9% of that is in salaries, which includes additional staffing benefits for the salaries staffed, and less than 2% is for other requests. And you'll see that our salaries and benefits continue to make up for that 80% of our entire budget. This is the breakout. 76% of our 2018 budget is, when we go to instruction, and maybe more impressive than that, you'll see the 76% of the 22 million new requests, 85% of all those requests are for instruction. And that's in the subsegment a little bit, including 433,000 of the technology increase. It's for software for the academic improvement plan, pushing that number upwards of closer to 90%. Those are substantially all of the requests that are coming forward in the budget for instruction. Here's the picture for our revenue. It doesn't, the percentages don't change much. 56% from the city driven by the composite index, 33% from the state. And Ms. Gray, this was, at this moment, this is what we have from the governor's budget as it's in fact right now. We have received from the state, though, that that 676,000 for the compensation supplement is at risk. So we just won't know at this moment.
Let me ask you a question, very well. Because what happened, we paid for, just showed the values, we were going to say, we'd be applying deep that hold on to teacher decompression, you know, to really count in the budget to help with the teacher decompression, so only 100,000.
So I just wanted to say, if we had absorbed that 1 million that was thought and were going to get from the state, I think it would be important to demonstrate what we lost.
I think it would be important to demonstrate what we lost in absorbing the additional one million in this current budget, and also what our plan B is in the budget moving forward for the seven hundred thousand, so that we can at least let folks know that it's something that we're strongly committed to, and we want to make sure that our teachers' salaries are decompressed, but what kind of burden would put it back on us after the money got shifted?
I can, I can give you a quick answer. Um, for the first time in a number of years, we actually ended our fiscal sixteen to year end in a positive position. So we added to our front balance. So the, the pain that we're talking about having to absorb that knowing is going to be masked initially, um, because once we get closer to having a full complement of staff, and we don't have these turnover dollars, which the teacher decompression and the work that we're doing on the, the non-teacher scales is designed to have a full complement all the time, we'll see that having to absorb losses from the state will have direct dollar-for-dollar impact. We still have structural deficiencies in our budget, we talked about that, that came forward from seventeen services we're simplifying. So today, uh, we won't be able to say, well, we didn't buy computers for the classrooms. Um, but likely by the end of eighteen, uh, when we see a shift, ideally we'll see a full complement. We'll actually see that if the state does what they've done to us this year, which is after you approve your budget, they just cut a million dollars out. It really is a real high dollar cut.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, uh, big picture at this moment, again, not having governor's budget, uh, general assembly approved budget. Uh, at this moment, our twenty-two point eight million dollar increase, we anticipate somewhere around four million dollars in the state. Uh, that would be an additional eighteen million dollar request to the city. Um, we will continue to refine this as we go forward. Uh, we'll be prepared, uh, at the beginning of January, once the governor's budget comes out, to talk about what those refinements look like. That's where we stand today, and we have to answer questions. Mr. France is gonna come up and talk about our capital plan, if we don't have any additional questions on the off page.
If Mr. France comes up, it would certainly benefit for us to have, in a few short weeks, two wonderful advocates for Mr. Butler's schools. Who will be making the unification. So we have high expectations. No pressure. Anything you all need from us, please.
Good evening again. Um, as you can see, we put together a five-year CIP plan. Um, plan right now, two hundred and seven point four billion dollars. That's about ten million dollars higher than what it was a year ago. Um, the biggest increase to that represents in the transportation department, which is getting the buses onto a twenty-year placement cycle. Uh, we've asked in the major categories, thirty-one million dollars in two thousand and eighteen. Last year, we were right at thirty-nine point one million. Um, in FY sixteen, we were at thirty-six point five. The whole is gonna continue to grow, it's not gonna get smaller. And we have two-thirds of our buildings are over fifty years of age. And half of that two-third number is over fifty years in age. If you remember, under the council for great city schools, if the building's gonna have a fifty-year life, then your CIP and your maintenance should be about two percent of total replacement value per year. Um, that would work out to around seventeen million dollars per year. On average, our CIP is between four to five million, coupled with our maintenance repair of about one point five. We're sitting at five point five million dollars versus the need of about seventeen million dollars. Uh, this particular plan does not have a lot of fluff. Of the thirty-one point one million dollars of major categories, we've identified twelve projects, equaling about six point six million that we would call critical. They're items that, um, if they were to fail, uh, we may not, we may not be in a position to bring something back up very quickly. We continue to be lucky and fortunate with our team in putting together emergency requests. However, there is going to come a time that one of two things will happen. One, the money will not be available. Or number two, the equipment's not gonna be available. And, um, I have to tell you, that's the thing that keeps me up at night, is when that is going to occur. Um, we put it inside the reports and information from Bellwether, all of which supports what we're, what we're talking about, which is this. Our schools right now today, of our forty-four main schools, not counting our pre-k centers, right now today, if we were going to make them all equal, that's the six hundred forty-five million dollars, forty-five million dollar program. If we were gonna do option five, which is what the board adopted, that's a five hundred and sixty-three million dollar program over the course of fifteen years. In order to address the number of empty seats, we have that discussion, which is five point two, five thousand, two hundred empty seats. That's a function on the capacity. The capacity of a room is based off of the number of students you want to put in a room. We believe, from the administration standpoint, the best course of action is to go on the low end, and not have thirty and thirty-five students inside a classroom as the state allows. We believe that using a functional number gives the schools the greatest flexibility as their population changes, which is occurring south of the river. The demographics are changing and changing dramatically. And building a classroom, a classroom and all its supporting features is a quarter of a million dollar investment. That's one classroom. A classroom takes twelve, thirteen months in a best-case scenario to build. So we believe that what we put together in trying to keep that flexibility, gives the greatest opportunity for our schools to be successful from a facility standpoint. Eventually though, as we've talked about, we're gonna need to get to a point, are we gonna continue to have small buildings? If we do, the operating costs are gonna be high. Or are we gonna go with larger buildings, and obviously their operating cost because of the greater number of students, those fixed costs get spread over a greater portion of the population, it makes it cheaper to operate. Um, here's some, again, information from Bellwether, if you close your school. As you've heard in all of our community meetings, your savings can be anywhere from five hundred thousand a year to upwards of about one point eight, depending on elementary versus in your high school situation. Those are dollars that are able to be reinvested back into the classroom. So it's not dollars that just go away, they're dollars that can be reinvested back into the challenges as David went through in his presentation. Um, per the Bellwether's utilization, Broad Rock today, it's actually closed to a hundred and forty percent. We brought in the twenty-four modular classrooms, which has brought it down close to a hundred percent. But that building was housed, was built for six hundred and fifty students. On the first day it was opened, it was at seven hundred thirty-five. So it was already over its utilization factor. Oak Grove continues to sit at about a hundred and two percent. MLK sits at about ninety-four percent. And Eugene today, which was built to be no bigger than practically sixteen hundred students, today is almost seventeen hundred students. And it's not just the number of students, the thing about it is, is your support function. It gets to be, particularly your cafeterias, where your cafeterias are not large enough in order to accommodate the students coming through in the lunch program, which causes problems and have long lunch lines. So with that, that's my piece on CIP.
Any questions for Mr. France, Ms. Harris Mohammed, Ms. Larson?
Mr. France, thank you so much. It has been a joy trying to, um, address, um, some of these challenges that our facilities faced with you and your team. I, I just want to publicly say that I believe, as someone who served on the rezoning committee a few years ago, that one of the disadvantages that this board has had is that we failed to complete the rezoning, um, in its entirety. And so thus, this is some of the issues that we had, and you are absolutely correct. When that new elementary school opened on the south side, Braa Braa, the first day, it was at full capacity. So we have to address that. Um, and, and I feel, you know, I, I feel somewhat heavy, just a tad bit, that the new individuals have to deal with that as they start next month. But needless to say, I am prayerful that it will be addressed in its entirety. We can no longer have a elementary school with thirty-two to thirty-three, thirty-four kids in a class. We cannot do that. That is not effective instruction. Um, so thank you so very much for, this is really not a new report. You have, over time, through the facilities report stated to us, with one hundred percent transparency, this is where we are. So, um, I offer my two colleagues that are moving on, that anything you need from not just the new board, but from those who you work with, we have to champion for our kids. Because this can no longer continue to have classrooms that are overcrowded, as the report indicated in two thousand and eleven, that it was not going to get better on the south side. So again, I am prayerful that some decisions will be made that will benefit children. We should see that in the first ninety days of the transition. Um, because coming in, you're already sixty percent through the school year. So I, I just encourage you to keep stabbing at it, keep pushing at it, so our teachers, our community, our students will have some relief. Um, and then they can see, but one of the things that I do want to say publicly-
Thirty seconds.
About Braa Braa, is that with the overcrowding they had, they still had academic success. And one of the things that have led to the academic success is because they have had longevity in their staff. When you look at Oak Grove Elementary and Martin Luther King Junior Middle School, they have had a turnover in staff every year for the past five to seventy years. So I'm prayerful in those situations as well, that we can keep some stability in those buildings, because ultimately, at the end of the day, it is all of the children, not about the adults. So thank you so very much for your service.
Thank you. Any questions, they're coming, Ms. Larson?
Um, I just wanted to thank Mr. France for his work as well. I think that over the last four years, we've made progress in terms of facilities. The first year I was on the board, I think we got less than a million dollars in our CIP. Um, it's been a journey, um, and the, the needs are much greater than the funding. Um, and I, I still feel that, and we'll continue to champion that. Um, I have a specific question about your, your line item here. So implementation pays one, option five, is that if we did, that's payment for some sort of loan?
That starts the, you know, I don't know where the funding, because I'm not on the funding side of the equation. But right now today, as we said, in option five, there's two things, and you can't solve it just with construction.
Right.
You can't solve it just with consolidation, and you can't solve it just with rezoning. It's all of those tools that were in the tool box. But the construction side getting, is getting, is slowly getting ready to catch up. Green Elementary and Elkar Thompson, which are the two schools that we said, since I can remember, starting option five. And they're continuing to grow. Um, Elkar Thompson, as you may recall, we said that coming year three, we were gonna see that projected growth take place. Elkar Thompson doesn't have the land available to do what we've done, for example, at Braa Braa, as well as at a, uh, Green Elementary. It doesn't make economic sense to, because the, the challenges at Elkar are that if we were to just address the problems that were in the building, we were gonna generate some life safety issues, that we were gonna spend ten to fourteen million dollars just on that. To renovate Elkar Thompson, which would be needed, for that six individual buildings that were here from nineteen oh two, um, that brings it up to twenty-five million dollars roughly. And then you've got the growth that you've gotta put into flight, and then all of a sudden, that twenty-five's gonna become thirty-five million dollars. And you still have an old building at Thompson Middle School. Whereas what we propose is a new middle school that would house fifteen hundred students, and would cost in the range of forty-five to fifty million dollars. And we still believe that that's the best course of action, and that's where we begin the design work on those two. And then in years two and three, we're actually doing the construction.
Okay. Um, so the, the option of having some private public partnership is still being explored?
We actually have, um, have received two other proposals.
Okay.
So we have now received a total of three.
Okay.
Um, they're going through the review process as we speak.
Yeah, you don't have to get in the weeds.
That's, I mean, that's all I can basically say.
Yeah, somebody asked about that at, um, a district meeting that I was at last week, and we haven't talked about it in several months, but I'm glad to hear it's still an option. Um, and then my last question is about Arlington Road. Um, I read that that has sold, so I assume we have the money in this fiscal year? And we gotta check, if we're still.
The way the resolution works is that it'll pass through to the school system under their CIP.
Okay.
And theoretically, it adds an addition, so we'll have to work with the city, since the closing is just taking place. Um, that-
But will be this budget, I mean, the other money for this budget year is already allocated, so this is on top of it.
Just theoretically, whatever budget year the money were passed through, if you read the spirit of the resolution the way I interpret it, it was intended to be additional money. So it wasn't intended to be a replacement of.
Right. That's my, um, perception too, so I'd like to be able to breast of that.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Ms. Gray? Can I, um, our student needs to go. It's been a pleasure having you here with us. Um, before we, um, send you on your way, I need to let you know about something we started earlier this year with our standing representatives, which is homework assignment. Right? You, you got a homework assignment, but it's been a pleasure, um, having you here with us. Hopefully we haven't deterred you from, perhaps one day, being a service officer to the vision of our school system. Um, we wish you all the best and have a wonderful holiday, and we'll be right back.
Yes, um, my question is, uh, around whether or not, um, the newly elected city administration has reached out to talk about the facilities plan or connected in any way. I've heard some rumor about shifting of what schools would be built, and, and some other things that are floating around out there that are a little bit concerning, but I want to make sure that we are communicating the need for, um, the first priority, obviously, would be Elkar Thompson to get built because of the train ride we've seen coming down with the rails. So, um, I'm just wondering if we've had the opportunity to communicate that to the new city administration, and, um, really let folks know how serious the issue is there?
We, we had the opportunity at a very high level to, uh, to indicate, review our plans. I would imagine that throughout the process, there'll be many further conversations regarding, um, you know, with, with, with the administration, and what the task force believes that our challenges are, which are holding true, actuals are holding pretty true, or we thought was.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Any additional questions? Thank you, Mr. France.
Thanks.
Next statement, that is six board actions, six point zero one received for action, but transfers.
Ms. Mar.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Before you enact, there are two budget transfers for your approval, and then a review, just for information. I do want to talk about the ones that I've paid for this moment. However, the first transfer, fifty thousand dollars, uh, is- However, the first transfer, fifty thousand dollars, uh, is within our exceptional education area, uh, really continues to address structural deficiencies, we're moving dollars, um, from computer replacement to support our service contract for our IP online system, something that, um, that we have enhanced, uh, to support our students, uh, but we need to make the transfer for that. The second one is a structural deficiency with transportation. Um, we're transferring a hundred and eighty-six thousand, total of a hundred and sixty-eight with fuel. Um, we think that we have enough in our fuel line to cover the year. Um, the bulk of that is going to first service for bus, bus repairs. Uh, the rest of these, again, are just for information. I would like to just, uh, call attention to the, to the board, the very last page. Uh, you may remember, um, earlier in this, uh, before the end of, uh, previous fiscal year, uh, you voted to give the superintendent authority to, to move dollars on to cover negative line items. Uh, and this is that summary that we said we'd come back to you with. The vast majority, I think, um, three and a half million of the three point seven million are related to, um, transportation costs. So again, everything on this last page is to cover the negative line.
Any questions on budget transfers that need our approval? Do the motion. Yes, ma'am.
I move that we accept the budget transfer request.
And approve it?
And approve them.
Second, it's been moved to probably second, any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Kirkwood, you call the role.
Mr. Boyer?
Yes.
Ms. Gray?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson? Mrs. Taylor?
No.
Mrs. Harris Mohammed?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes. Yes.
Next one?
The next item is item six point zero two received for action in the resources section.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chair, School Board activated. The HR actions for proof this evening are as follows. The nomination of six employees, the change of contract of two employees, the transfer of one employee as an addendum. We have the nomination of four employees, the change of contract for one employee, and the transfer for one employee.
Any questions? Repose? Follow me back.
The next item is six point zero three received for action, school will travel to activity requests. We have two requests, um, one is from Mr. Coleman for two community events, for a world member in transition. And he is requesting five pounds for those two events. And Mr. Born is requesting, um, a hundred and fifty dollars to help support a breakfast junker, family breakfast junker.
Any questions?
I do, I have a certain, I have twenty questions for Mr. Coleman.
No, no, I do not, I do not. I want to, there are no questions. Um, make the motion that we approve the...
It's been moved, is there second, second, it's been moved to probably second, any discussion? Madam Kirkwood, you call the role.
Mr. Boyer?
Yes.
Ms. Gray?
Yes.
Ms. Larson?
Yes.
Mrs. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Harris Mohammed?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. The next item is item seven, the incentive agenda, seven point zero one, who will be answered on the twenty-first, two thousand sixteen.
Still moving. Second, it's been moved to probably second, we approve the mass. Any questions? Madam Kirkwood, you call the role.
Mr. Boyer?
Yes.
Ms. Gray?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Taylor.
Mrs. Taylor?
No.
Mr. Harris Mohammed?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman? Motion passes five more. The next item is out of informational items, to receive the quarterly financial statement from Patrick Henry. Those were, um, submitted on board that's for you to review as other information.
Um, before we go into our closed session, um, I do wanna take a moment to just express what others have expressed earlier today, tonight, during the pandemic period, which is my deep, um, appreciation, gratitude, and thanks to all of, um, us and all of them sitting around this dais. Um, this work is not easy. It is, um, emotionally taxing, um, but it's, it's good work, it's noble work. And despite what has, um, transpired, um, good, bad, or indifferent over the last four years, we've made progress in the school division, and it's because, um, each and every one of the people who have served, um, from January twenty thirteen and will continue to serve until December thirty-first, twenty sixteen, have made an impact on the school division. And, um, I know it's not often said, um, but I thank you, each and every one of you for your service, um, and for your time, and for your commitment to making Richmond Public Schools the type of school division that our children deserve and our families expect. And so, um, some of us will continue to serve, uh, in official roles, and some of us will continue to serve in perhaps, um, just as important roles, which are those as community advocates and, and voices in the neighborhoods and at our schools, um, for all of the things that were discussed tonight and all the challenges that we face. So, um, Mr. Boyer, Ms. Gray, Ms. Larson, Mr. Coleman, Ms. Harris Mohammed, Ms. Taylor, Ms. Epstein, Epstein, Dr. Jones, and Epstein, uh, thank you. I am deeply honored to have served with you over the last four years, and I look forward to continuing, um, the fight for a better school system, um, for our city. So thank you so much for your service.
So this now requires me to break dance, are you ready? No, um, I just want to say that it has truly been a bucket of ministry to serve twenty-four thousand students and to serve with aid of the people. I, my prayer is that you all continue the good fight, that you continue to keep the main thing, the main thing, and that's children. And do not let anything intercede in that fight to do what's right by children and to do what's right by the people who serve them, and that's the teachers and the classroom. As you know, who can tell me what my favorite saying has been?
I've been educated. Twenty years.
Twenty years, I've been educated. So I look decent in a... Decent in a... But I look forward to serving you all as an advocate to ensure that we continue to serve our students. It has truly been beyond an honor. I, I would have never imagined that God asked me to do this for four years of my life. And you have blessed me more than I could have ever been a blessing to you. So thank you so very much.
Thank you.
Can I get a clap? I mean, all the guys. So Dr. Lynn, I'm sorry, I can't change for you right now. Can't, you know, get my other four outfits.
Did you properly identify yourself? I love that you like to be cavalier with the rules and the policy. Mr. Coleman?
Um, my esteemed colleague, Mr. Born, forgot about two of us who actually have been here eight years. And I too, at Mr. Born, um, just wanna honor my colleagues for these two years that I had the opportunity, um, to serve as you all's chair. And, um, being here eight years, one of the key things, I think, I've learned is that you can make a difference if you stay at it. If you get over the hard times and keep pushing forward. Um, it was a hard decision for me to decide, uh, to not run again. Uh, I do believe it was the right decision for me. But I also wanna thank, uh, Dr. Benton and this administration, all the teachers and principals who, pedestrians, bus drivers, the people who are on the ground every day. As we do what we do, we absolutely are aware that it only gets done on the ground. And you all have done a tremendous job to position, uh, this school board that I believe the next board has a tremendous opportunity. I appreciate my colleague, Ms. Mohammed, because she always reminds us of what we could have accomplished. Um, and that's my challenge to again come in board, to, from day one, decide that the only way you accomplish things as a board is that you actually work together. And, and that's what the children, that's what the community is looking for. I believe Richmond, Virginia is an amazing place of opportunity, but it's the people who sit in these seats who decide whether or not to live into that opportunity. I am absolutely overjoyed to know that two people on City Council, for sure, will understand the challenges that we deal with here on the seventeenth floor and beyond. So, thank you to all my colleagues, thank you, Dr. Benton, you, and, um, the wonderful team of people who do this work every day. And I am committed to being a cheerleader, uh, for the coming board. Um, as a matter of fact, I'm gonna go and put myself on blast, I will actually come to meetings and say positive things to you. Just to see what that feels like. So you all can feel some love.
Amen, amen.
At least I can do that.
Ms. Larson?
I don't want this to be an all-night thing, but I, I, I've been so honored to, to be in this position and to work with, with everybody around here. And I'm especially thankful, um, for the staff, um, who has supported us and who has helped move our ideas forward.
That's right.
Um, because that's what we have, is ideas, and you, and lots of questions. And, um, so you all have been really great, and you answer your phones all the time, on weekends and at night. And I know, we don't say it often enough, but I really appreciate everybody, um, who has worked for us for the last couple of years. It's been a huge transition. And, um, at times, a ton of excitement and great feelings, and at times, you know, you just feel like you're, you're totally beat up. Um, so just keep at it. I mean, I am so optimistic about the future of our city. I feel like we have, um, good leadership coming in, and there's an excitement and a buzz about education in our city like I've never seen before. So, you know, stay at it, keep pushing, keep doing the hard work, and so all the incoming board members that are here, like, this is you, and you guys got this, so good luck.
Yes.
Well, um, I wasn't planning to say anything, but since everybody else has spoken, like, um, it's a, it's a very emotional meeting for me because it has been eight years. Um, Dawn and Dawson and I sat in, uh, discipline hearings all morning together. And, um, knowing the challenges of our students and how real they are and what kinds of issues and trauma that our children face each day before they even come into our school building, um, resonates fully with all of us who've sat through and heard the stories that we hear. And we know how hard our staff, our school board, and other community folks are working to try to mitigate all the circumstances, the negative circumstances that our children face each day. So, um, I think that, starting off eight years ago, Dawn and I couldn't have been further apart, and I felt, um, so much that we've, we've grown, I've grown, um, as a, as a school leader. Um, and we are all on the same page, which is focusing on helping the least of our populations, our children who are suffering, um, in their homes and in their communities. And, um, there's no more important work than here doing this. Um, I want to be able to support that financially, um, through work on City Council, and that's my commitment. And, um, I just wanna say also to the incoming school board people, if you get here late, you'll get stuck with this broken chair.
So make sure you don't come late, because you're sitting practically on the floor. What does that say?
You can't afford to find me.
Mr. Born? Um, so I just wanna thank the board for taking a chance on me back in January, February, um, you know, approving my appointment to the board, and Dr. Benton, your staff, uh, coming in at a crazy time, the crazy budget, uh, y'all were great to work with and all the way through the process. Um, and I think, you know, for me, for the, for the incoming board, it is, you know, if you wanna humbly experience, come sit on the disciplinary committee.
Yeah.
It, it is truly an eye-opening experience, and it feels otherworldly that only a few miles away, some of our students could be experiencing, uh, the things they are experiencing. Uh, so it's something I encourage you all at least one time, uh, to come sit on, because we need three people to make it happen, and if we don't have three people, kids aren't, you know, getting their opportunity or getting to have their appeal heard. Um, that's something I didn't know about coming into this, but it's definitely, probably, the one thing that's had the biggest impact, um, on my life and then just my knowledge of everything that, that goes on, uh, within our, the four walls of each school. Um, but yeah, just thanking to the staff for, uh, helping me along the way. And, um, just for everyone who's come, comes to meetings, it is the building is what it takes. And I agree with Ms. Larson that the, um, it's a really exciting time in Richmond. Uh, there's a lot of positive energy, and that energy only continues if, if we help harness it and carry it through on, uh, just action items and, and showing up. And I really believe for a lot of these kids, sometimes it's showing up to sporting events, almost to refer to activity, uh, speaks volumes in their lives, um, because you might have been the only person after that. So, um, best wishes, uh, you know, I think I can speak for the board. If you have any questions, and it is a quite a learning curve, feel free to call me or someone else on the board. And, um, we'd be happy to give you our two cents on things you may be going through, especially with regards to, you know, things that have happened and, um, this institutional knowledge. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Last, but certainly not least, this experience for me has been truly amazing, um, the good, the bad, and the ugly. And coming in as a mother first, to our kids, and then as a teacher, and then seeing this whole process and learning so much and growing so much, um, has been absolutely invaluable to me. And it's not something that I will sin and ever forget. Um, the thing that I guess I would say my greatest takeaway would be, in addition to our wonderful teachers and staff, um, would be the parents and the students who have reached out to me and trusted me with their concerns and their care, so that the playing field could move towards the end level. That's incredibly important, and we need to have honest, courageous conversations about how our students are receiving very different... about how our students are receiving very different educational experiences in the same environment, based on their race, based on their economic status. And we must always remember and never, never forget that it's not about where you come from, it's about where you're going, and to know what your rights are, and to hold every single individual that you see sitting in these seats, because that's the one consistent. And life in general has changed. This will always change, but the people being empowered should never change. And so never forget that no matter who your leader is, from your president to your school board representative, to always, always hold you accountable. And I look forward to seeing you all in every endeavor, because education means everything. Although my position is the only one that's still a number, no matter what I'm doing, you'll always be advocated.
Ms. Harris Mohammed?
Pursuant to the Personnel Section, two point two dash thirty-seven thousand eighty-one of the Quote of Virginia nineteen fifty has amended. I move that the school board of the City of Richmond convene a closed session to discuss prospective candidates for employment and assignment. In the event of being held on the board, we go to salary, and then the regulation of the specific. Other officers will explore some of the divisions, including the administrative department, which is a good thing. Performance, design, management, and all being.